Yes.
Good morning. I'd like to call the Calbright Board of Trustees Executive Committee meeting to order. Today is June the 15th. It is 11:00 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting protocols and procedures.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Luks, board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org under People, under Board of Trustees. For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q and A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda only. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Present.
Amy Costa.
Present.
Tom Epstein. Jelena Grande.
Present.
Pam Haynes.
Here.
Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Present.
We have Coram President Haynes.
Thank you. So now we're going to proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. I've asked Bill Rawlings to lead us in that.
Thank you, President Haynes. Please place your right hand over your heart and ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill. This is a time where we can discuss the order of the agenda. Do we have any changes to that order? I don't see any hands raised or any shaking of the head in the negative, so the order of the agenda will stand. I'm going to make my president's report short and brief. We I want to talk about, I want to talk about the budget and and while Calbright isn't necessarily the beneficiary of a lot of extra dollars, the system is. And when, when there's, when there is money on the table, one would think that we would have an on-time budget. And I have my fingers crossed that we will have an on-time budget. But what happens in that building is everyone sort of wants their piece of it. And there's more skirmishes around that. My sense of it, and Amy, you're welcome to jump in here in this, in this portion of the president's report. There's an opportunity for the system, along with Calbright, to really use those dollars in a real positive and impactful way. And my sense is that for many of our colleges in our districts, that's what they plan to do. But it is a lot of money and, and I am hoping that as we are part of this system and we are working hard to partner with our sister colleges, that all of us continue to keep first and foremost, our students at the top of our agenda and top of mind as we, as we use those dollars in support of, there's a saying, meeting students where they are. And, and addressing through our institutions and through our programs, what they say they need. And so as I, as I look at, and I have no, no issues, no, no hesitation or concerns, there is going to be a budget. But I, but this is the time for me to think about how those dollars are used. The dollars, every budget, and I continue to say this every single year, is a due notation of our values, what we think is important. And the questions that need to be asked is, how are these, how are these dollars being spent on behalf of our students? Can you show me? Can you tell me? Because, because those are just, they're line items. They're, they're, they're nickels, dimes, and dollars, and there are a lot of them. And so as a layperson, I'm, I want to know at this line item, what are we doing on behalf of our students? And what are we doing on behalf of our most vulnerable students? So with that, I will sort of end my comments. I'm optimistic about Calbright, and I'm optimistic that we're going to see another budget, and another one after that, and another one after that. So I will close with, with both optimism and, and I want to thank staff. In particular, the governmental relations staff and the communication staff, because I know that you have rolled up your sleeves. You have knocked on every door. You have knocked twice, knocked three times if necessary. You have picked up the phone to make certain that in terms of Calbright, that folks know that we're here and the work that we are doing. I will also close with my final statement. I was up for confirmation. And I have to tell you that I got my greatest support from those who know the work that Calbright's doing. And if they don't, once I shared with them who our students were, they knew that they were in support of Calbright, including our Senate Pro Tem President, Tony Atkins, and, and the, the two Republicans that serve on that particular committee. I, I have coined a saying, it is thirty-two, twenty-eight, eighteen, fifty, fifty. And Tony Atkins, sorry, Pro Tem Tony Atkins said, well, what is that? Thirty-two percent of our students are African-American. Twenty-eight percent are Latino. Eighteen percent are Asian. Fifty percent are women. And the other fifty percent are caregivers. Oh, and there's another number, twenty-two. Twenty-two counties in the state of California have students who are being served by Calbright. That's no small undertaking. It requires hard work. I, I look forward for us to roll up our sleeves and make those numbers even better. I should also have, I should have also had one hundred, because we, one hundred plus, because we have more than a hundred of our students who have certificates. We are working on our third year. We are, we are, we are poised to get through accreditation, and not get through it, but to excel in accreditation. So we are definitely on the right track. And what we now need to do is to tell our story and to be unapologetic about it, because we're movers and shakers, all in the right direction. So with that, I will end my, my report. So we do not, we do not have a report from President Minion today, because she is not attending the meeting due to a medical issue. We look forward to hearing from her in her report next month. So with that, I'm going to move to two point one, which is the board is now going to move to closed session. We have one item on the closed session agenda. The conference, it's the conference with the labor negotiators. Is there any public comment on this closed session item?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Very well. Then we should expect to return from closed session in approximately thirty minutes. Shall we now move to closed session? We are back from closed session, and there was no, no action taken in, in that session. So with that, we move to the consent calendar, which is section three of the agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from consent, from the consent agenda for discussion or separate vote? I see no hands raised. So can I get a motion and a second, please?
This is Member Grande. I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
And a second?
A second, Rawlings.
So would you please call the roll?
President Haynes, I just wanted to mention that there was no public comment.
Oh, sorry. Is there any public comment? And there is none, right?
There is none. Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. So we're now moving to our action items. Four point one is the data analysis course outline of record for two courses, and we will have Tamika Connors, our SVP for, for strategic initiatives. Present.
Thank you, President Haynes, and good afternoon, board members, or almost good afternoon. I'm here to present our two course outline of records for your approval. As a reminder, Michael Younger, Calbright's Vice President of Workforce Development and Innovation, highlighted during the March twenty-second Board of Trustees Meeting Study Session, Calbright's Development, How Calbright Develops a Workforce-Driven Equity-Centered Community Design Framework for Program Research, Selection, and Development. Prior to moving forward with program development and pilot launch, the board received a preview of the data analysis research and findings to support new program selection. This research highlighted that Californian, California organizations of all types are now seeking to convert mass data into actionable information, improve products and services, and streamline related systems and processes in order to complete their transformation and better serve their customers. Data entry, I'm sorry, entry-level data analysis roles present unique unwreaths into the knowledge economy for Calbright's population of adult learners. And today, we are asking the board to approve the course outline of record for the data analysis program. The first course outline of record is Introduction to Structured Data, Business 500. And the second course outline of record is Application of Structured Data, Business 501. And I'll take any questions if you have them. You're muted, Pam.
Trustees, any questions?
I have a question. This is Member Grande. Tamika, could you possibly tell me a little bit more about the program that these courses are designed to support in terms of potential employment opportunities, the position titles that they might be related to? If you happen to know the TOPSIF or SOC codes, those would be helpful, too.
Sure. I'll go into a little bit of detail about Course One and Course Two outline of record. So for Introduction to Structured Data, students will gain an understanding of basic methods, methods, and terminology used in data analysis, and how data is generated, and be able to organize and visualize data using spreadsheets and structured query language, which is SQL. Students will begin preparing for the workplace by learning effective presentation skills and data storytelling techniques. What's exciting about the second course is that students will actually be able to apply their knowledge to a real-world project. So students will be able to not only tell the story, but to visualize the interpretation of data using a real project upon which they'll have some mentorship and some support along the way. So we're looking at this program as an introduction to data analysis, so very entry-level skills like data clerks and junior data analysis. And I could get the top codes for you as well. I don't have them handy with me right now.
That's okay. I can look them up. I was just wondering what occupations, and when you said data clerks, that's going to be real easy for me to find. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Trustee Rawlings.
So I was taking a look through this, and I saw, I think it's great that we're going to be introducing the SQL. I usually use SQL with, with relational databases, and here we're not, so it's, I know the application could be a little simpler. What I'm wondering is, do we have a plan in the pipeline to transition students from the more standard structure data that you might do with Excel to expose them to some of the ideas, or maybe a follow-on course that actually introduces them to relational databases?
Not at the moment, but that's, that's a possibility. We want our students to continuously come back to upskill with us.
Good. I was thinking this would connect to that. There's a whole career pathway I could see with that. So, so hopefully we get there. Yeah.
Other questions?
Might I ask a follow-up? Tamika, is there a program that these courses are already aligned with, or are we going to be seeing a curriculum proposal for the program separately?
The program will be separately, so this will be a new program.
Thank you very much.
So I have a question. I'm really glad that you asked, Jelena, that you asked the question. What are some, some of the titles of, where we, some that we would sort of recognize? So can I assume that that would be entry level? And I ask that question that way, because typically, in many of the jobs, the employer will say, you need to have, you know, Word, or you need to have Excel, or are those? So is that the type of job that, that we are, we are training for? Or is there, is there a secret sauce relative to this analysis piece? Because that's how you've titled it. That is somewhat different than, than, than maybe that first level job that I'm thinking of.
This is the entry-level job, and that's why we are entitling it Introduction to Data Analysis, instead of an analyst, because that's a higher-level role. And the other component to this is this is open to all students, no prerequisites, because we are providing the wraparound supports, both in terms of tutoring and content, to help students use transferable skills to come into, again, this knowledge economy.
And so I'm always interested in sort of this, the salary range. Do you have, do you obviously, you, you thought of that, but do you know what that salary range is to share?
Yes, I'm going to call on my colleague, Michael Younger, who, this was a part of his presentation to the board in March.
Absolutely. Thank you, Tamika, and Madam President, and members of the board. Absolutely. So as, you know, kind of was listed in our presentation to the board, the salary range starts at around the $35,000 range and greater. And so what we've tried to do is, as you all know, the founding of our institution, the early kind of research for Cal Capes really talked about this type of worker, this type of learner, being in or around that $25,000 range. So we obviously wanted to find the classifications and ensuring that the program supports better pay, pay equity, and moving that forward as well, that, that overall concept. So it is at, at the $35,000 and up range, even at the entry level, which is exciting. And I, and I might add as well that we were advised by an advisory council, private, public sector representatives, that also reinforced, you know, both program design and structure, as well as our labor market research.
Thank you. And that, that would be, so at least I'll speak for myself, that, how much people make is helpful to me. We have students in our system that think they're on a pathway and only find out after the fact that it, no way would, would, would pay their, their rent and their, their expenses. But it's sort of too late. And so having an understanding of that. And then it would, for me, it would also be helpful to know, because I do know in different regions of the state, that that number may be lower or may be higher depending on demand. I'll just say that I'm interested in that piece as well, to have an understanding of those, those numbers. And it doesn't have to be in all presentations, but it's just, it's helpful to know, especially in our most challenged areas, what kind of job opportunities that will present. Because at the end of the day, this is the kind of information we need to put, push down to our students, so that they know that there's job opportunities out there as they sort of begin to navigate the Calbright learning modules. And so, oh, Jelena, you have your hand raised.
I just wanted a follow-up question. Are there any industry-specific certifications or credentials that are linked to these courses that you're aware of?
So that's, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
There's, there's potential, but really, because this program, this, these skills cross all different sectors, there really isn't a necessity for an industry-recognized credential. And, and Michael can reinforce this from our, our meetings with our advisory council. They also felt similar to that as well. But Michael, please go ahead.
You're absolutely right, Tamika. You know, I would only suffice it to say that from representatives, from incumbents, to hiring managers and leaders on the advisory council, they also reinforced this notion of, of not necessarily that, that centralized certification. They've, they've always said that, you know, post this program, if folks are really much, you know, in line with wanting to achieve analyst and greater, that it would be, you know, cloud certifications and things of that nature. But for this entry level, we are very, very in line with the industry.
So then that, that gives me another follow-up question, and it's this. Calbright is doing something very different than everybody else. And our students are going through the program. Will they get something that says, at the, at, when, when they, when they finish this program, will they get something that has all of the training that they have had through the modules? That at least it's a piece of paper, or it's a, a way that they can email or text someone and set, and say, I've been through a seven-month program, whatever that timeframe is, and these are the skills that I have learned as a result of that? Just so that they have backup?
Yes, they will receive a certificate of competency from, from Calbright, which will outline the skills and competencies mastered. They could potentially also receive a digital badge from Calbright that is able to be put on LinkedIn and other places. And they'll also have their project upon which they can speak to in an interview and demonstrate what they're able to do.
Great. Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised. I really appreciate this presentation. Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
And can I get a motion and a second to approve?
It would be a pleasure to provide the motion to approve these courses.
I have a motion. Can I get a second, please?
I can, I'll go a second.
We have a second. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein. Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. Well, we're now moving to four point two, which is the authorization of expenditure, to the approval of agreement addendum with STRUT, and we have Paul Akok presenting.
Thank you. Madam President, Madam Vice President, and board members. We are seeking authorization of current-year expenditures to STRUT and an additional addendum with STRUT to continue providing services to Calbright. STRUT currently provides the primary learning management system for Calbright's coursework, works actively with Calbright to launch new integrations and programs, and is patient to work with Calbright through various phases. Although Calbright is actively exploring additional platforms as part of its continued evaluation of technology infrastructure, maintaining a relationship with STRUT is critical to the continued operation of Calbright's current offerings. In addition, it is helpful to maintain a level of consistency in operational functions as we seek accreditation, particularly in regards to educational programs. Calbright College signed the original master services agreement and initial statement of work with STRUT in the summer of 2019. These outline the base platform license fee of $35,000 per year and a per-student monthly fee of $12 per student per month. Please note that there are no minimum user count stipulations in the agreements, and also no penalties for reductions in the number of students on the STRUT platform. Since the value of the services provided by STRUT was less than $100,000, the original agreements with STRUT were authorized and executed by the President and Chief Executive Officer for the previous two fiscal years and the current fiscal year. However, in the current fiscal year, Calbright's student population has grown significantly, and the resulting per-student monthly fees have also grown. Result, the result is that the costs associated with the services provided by STRUT are projected to be around $125,000 in this current fiscal year, which exceeds the President and Chief Executive Officer's threshold for approval. In addition, Calbright College has engaged with STRUT through additional statements of work to assist with instructional development within this fiscal year with a combined total value of $65,000. These statements of work were also within the threshold of approval and execution by the President and Chief Executive Officer at the point of signing. Since the combined statements of work provided by STRUT this fiscal year exceed the threshold of expenditure authority granted to the Chief President and Chief Executive Officer, board approval is required to provide the needed authorization to pay current fiscal year invoices. Here are the items seeking board approval. Authorization for payments to STRUT totally not to exceed the amount of $190,000 for this fiscal year. Additionally, approval for a new addendum with STRUT that covers the next two fiscal years, and this includes the same platform license fee of that $35,000 per year, included a not-to-exceed amount of $125,000 toward professional services needed to implement new programs. And we have renegotiated our per-student monthly fees with a price improvement, which lowers our cost from $12 per student per month to a tiered model ranging from four and a half to eight dollars per student per month. The projected per-student expenditures for the next fiscal year, based on the newly discounted tiered rates in the addendum, is $155,000. Thank you.
Madam President, you're muted.
I apologize. I'm sorry. I'm slow on the, the move here today. So we do have a question from Board Member Grande.
Thank you, President Haynes, and thank you, Paul, as well, for the information on this particular agenda item. I appreciate the notation that you made about going out and looking for a different learning management system. If I were to quote from the abstract of the May revision of the budget, we are trying wholeheartedly with the governor's proposed budget to increase intersegmental collaboration that includes an adoption of an intersegmental common learning management system. And since the majority of our colleges have adopted Canvas and are using Canvas, I would really like to encourage us to continue working in that vein, so that they have a seamless transition from Calbright to our credit-bearing institutions because of their familiarity with the learning management system that has been so widely adopted system-wide. But I, I appreciate this agenda item coming forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from our board members, trustees? I don't see any. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Then can I get a motion to approve in a second?
Drawings, I'll move.
And a second, please?
I can, I'll go a second.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. Thank you. We're moving to 4.3, which is the board policy 5400 Associated Students Organization, and we have Ted Lie presenting.
Very much, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, members of the board. I have the pleasure of bringing board policy 5400 to your attention. This board policy continues to reinforce our commitment to student government and progress in this area by ensuring that the Calbright Student Body Organization elected leaders will have the resources they need to conduct their meetings and communicate with each other and the entire student body. This includes utilizing our electronic systems and having accounts for calendaring as well as being able to meet virtually. And of course, the guidance from our team, including Katie Myers. So I am open to any questions and encourage you to vote yes on this.
Thank you for that presentation. Any, any questions from our trustees? I don't see any hands raised. I'll just say I'm really pleased with the progress being made and look forward to a much more robust agreement and the, the association really developing. So with that, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Then would you please call the roll?
Oh, we didn't.
Oh, I need a motion. Sorry. Boy, am I off my game. I need a motion in a second.
I'll second.
Okay, so we do have a motion. We do have sane people here helping me out. So we have a motion and a second. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegarde.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jolina Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
And Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. And I did get sleep last night. So this is, and I, and I wasn't drinking yesterday. So I just want you to know all of those things. And I don't drink, drink coffee in the morning. Maybe I should. Okay, with that said, we're going to move on to 4.4. The California Online Community Colleges, which is Calbright and the California School Employees Association and it's Calbright Chapter 53. It's pursuant to Government Code Section 3547, which is the initial proposals. And we have Joseph Brimgartner, who we, who will be presenting.
Good morning, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, members of the board. This recommendation is for the board of trustees to approve the initial proposals as provided by the Calbright College and the California School Employees Association. This will provide us with the opportunity to enter into collective collaborative negotiations for the inaugural collective bargaining agreement for this group. We look, we are look forward to this being the beginning of many years of collaborative and positive working relationships. And we're excited for the opportunity to enter into this process with our labor partners.
Thank you. Um, board members, do you have any questions regarding the opening initial proposals? I see a hand raised. Board member Grande.
Thank you, President Haynes.
Board member Epstein.
I was just wondering if we had an approximate timeline where we may see the actual draft of the contract language come before us. Would this process take six months, nine months? What are we looking at in terms of a timeline?
Those are very good questions. When we enter into negotiations, obviously, we hope that we can do it, you know, in an expedient way, but we also want to be thorough and make sure that we have a solid contract when we're done. You know, I would hope to have some type of proposals before the board sometime this fall or winter. But again, the process itself will determine that, you know, as we move forward, you just don't know for sure until we really get into it. And since we haven't started and this is an inaugural contract, that means we will be bargaining every single word of a brand new agreement. So it, it could take a little time to do that.
Thank you. Um, board member Epstein?
Yes, thanks. I just had one comment. I, I noticed in the CSEA list of issues that they talk about shared governance. And I just wanted to make the point that, you know, under the statute, what we're really talking about is participatory governance and not shared governance. And I think that should be recognized right from the start.
I would, I'll just add my two cents. I would agree with that. We, words, words matter. So.
Yes.
Are there any other member comments before we go to public? Don't see any other hands raised. Is there any public comment?
There are no public comments, President Haynes.
Okay, then can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'll move.
Epstein moves.
I'll second.
And Rawling seconds. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jolina Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
And Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. 4.5 is the proposed, oops, wrong. For, we, we are now finished with our action items. And we can now move to information and reports. 5.1 is the third quarter budget update 2122 and the adopted budget for 2223. And we have a core there, there are Dar Jean, who will be presenting. I kill your name, Cora, all the time. My apologies.
President Haynes, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we did not present item 4.5.
Oh, this. Oh, the salary schedules. You know what? You need to get a new president. You know, Annie, you want to start early?
No way, Madam President. You got it.
Oh, dear Lord. Okay, uh, we, we do need to go through 4.5. It is the, the proposed salary schedules for consideration and adoption. And again, we have Joseph Brimgartner. Would you please present?
Thank you, President Haynes. That woke me right up. Thank you for doing that.
Obviously, none of this has woke me up, so I really apologize. I'm so sorry.
Okay, well, thank you again, President Haynes, Vice President Costa and members of the board. Over the past year, McKnight and Associates has done some extensive work regarding, regarding working on creating salary schedules that are appropriate and compatible with other community colleges. This is the culmination of their work. As part of the work, internal alignment was reviewed. Job descriptions were reviewed and matched as closely as possible with the comparable groups. And adjustments were made to ensure that the, there was appropriate placement of current and future employees, that we had good internal alignment, et cetera. Once approved, the salary schedules will be provided, will be used to provide visible transparency, alignment and competitive salary ranges that will be utilized to recruit and retain, and retain high quality applicants. It will also help us in the process of recruitment because we will now, once we have these salary schedules adopted, we'll be able to actually publish salary schedules as part of job recruitment, which should also help us in our recruitment of employees. What we're asking is requesting your approval of the salary schedules and provided to authorize, also provide to authorize the placement of current employees on the salary schedules as determined by the Human Resources Department.
Thank you. Are there any board member questions? Trustee Grande.
Thank you, President Haynes. Um, I, I think I have this right. These are only the non-CBA schedules, correct, for management and confidential?
That's correct.
How many days are included in the, the work calendar for these types of employees? I know that sometimes we see 195 days for instructional. We see 216 or 220 days for other occupational categories. But for confidential and management, what, what is the number of days, if you happen to know?
You know, off the top of my head, they're full time employees, so those are, I would have to get you the days. I'd have to get you the exact number, but they're full time employees, which means that the only non-workdays are holidays and holidays and weekends. So there, there are not non-scheduled workdays like there are in like perhaps a faculty calendar.
Thank you.
So I have a follow up. Um, you, okay, so I come from a private sector thinking. Um, those are usually given in hours as opposed to days, right? Or not?
Well, it depends. So we do have a very small number of hourly employees, but those hourly employees are part of the CSEA bargaining unit. They're not part of, of these units. So these are contracted and not contracted employees. These are employees who have a work year. You know, they're working year round and there is, the salary schedule is arranged by both monthly and yearly salaries. And then, of course, that can be divided down within our pay comp system by hourly. If someone takes off a portion of a day or whatever, then it breaks out by hour.
So these are all salaried. But it, but I, okay, they're all, even the classified?
The classified is not on there. So again, the CSEA.
Classification, I'm sorry.
Yes, CSEA is not in part of this. So these are confidential and management employees.
And so they're expected to work a 12 month, right?
Yes.
And, and obviously there's vacation and all those things, but they're expected to work 12 months.
Yes.
Okay, all right. My question is answered. Any other questions? Seeing no hands raised, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Good. Um, thank you. Then can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'll move.
Perry moves. May I get a second?
Second.
Epstein seconds. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jolina Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
And Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. We're now down to information and reports. 5.1, which is the third quarter budget update 2122 and the adopted budget 2223. A core you're going to be presenting on this item.
Thank you very much, President Haynes. Good afternoon, President Haynes, Vice President Acosta and board members. This is our third quarter fiscal report, which means it's our actual expenditures as of up to March and projections for the remainder of the year. And then we're going to present you the tentative budget. Before we start talking about the numbers and other things, I just want to, everyone know that since our CEO has not been available recently, we have not taken the presentation with a CEO before our final budget comes to the board, we'll be able to have the CEO vet all the information. And then you'll get a final budget on, on August 17th. Let's go ahead with the slides. So we're going to give you an overview. We're going to talk about the budget preparation and timeline as adopted by the board. Like I said, it's the third quarter fiscal report and the tentative budget. We'll talk about the annual funds and the one time funds and some of the budget highlights and the next steps that we'll be doing for the budget preparation. Next slide. Next. So the annual budget, basically that we are bringing in front of you on, at, at a very draft or tentative basis is complies with the strategic missions for 2022, 2023. And it's based on explicit funding for flat annual funding of $15 million. And a carryover one time monies, we are estimating at this time that we'll have $71 million remaining as of Q3 that will go into the next fiscal year. This amount could change as the year ends and we have, and we finalize the audit. The overall budget says ambitious goals to drive towards a new phase of high quality growth. And Calbright College, as you all know, has developed and implemented as, begun implementing an implementation plan that covers the period January 21 through December 25. Next slide. So that the couple of slides, we're just going to talk about the board policy and the timeline for the budget. Our board policy 6200 basically details the criteria of how we should get the budget in front of the board. The annual budget shall support the college strategic priorities. Assumptions upon which the budget is based will be presented to the board for review, which will be doing the following slides. A schedule is provided to the board by March of each year. That includes for presentation, the tentative budget, then the required public hearing and a board study session that will follow. And one of the salient features of this board policy is that the unrestricted general fund shall be no less than 5% of the total general fund expenditures. Changes in assumptions upon which budget will be based will be brought before the board. And that happens during every quarterly report that comes to the board. And budget projections to address the long term growths and commitments. Next slide. So this is a calendar. Basically, we start the preparation in March by talking to the board about the process. Between March and April, there are meetings with the executive teams in the developmental phase of the budget. And we actually met with each one of the departments as we went through this process. We had a budget advisory committee meeting. And then we are right now in June, presenting the tentative budget to the board. And the final budget will come before you in August with a public hearing to be held, followed by the actual budget adoption. This is, as you know, is only an information item. Next slide. Next. So this particular, what we call the table here is summarizes the full budget scenario, starting from the adopted budget time. And then what the Q3 numbers look like. And I've just highlighted a boxed in red, some of the numbers, and I'll go through those specific numbers. As of the quarter three, which I said, the expenditures as of March, beginning in July of this fiscal year, the annual budget that we have, what is called Fund 11, that we say is $6.5 million. One time monies we had was 77 million for a total of $83.662 million. That's the beginning balance that we had. The revenues that we, that we've received so far is 11.405 in the annual budget and one time monies, we got 385,000 for a total of 11.79. Now, the total expenses as of the Q3, as of the end of March is 9.1 million and 4.684 for a total of 13.7. So if you take the beginning balance, add the revenues and then reduce the expenditures, we are estimating at this time that our ending balances for annual fund could be, would be 8.8, $72 million for the one time monies and a total of $81 million would be the ending balance. The 8.8 million that you see is the unassigned funds that represents the reserve for the district as of the Q3. Just going to the next projected column. What you see, the numbers that you see there are what we are saying that we are projecting. The numbers are going to be for Calbright for fiscal year 2122. So the beginning balance would remain at 83.662. We're saying we will receive a total revenue of 15 million for 35. And we are estimating to spend about 19.882 million. And, and with an ending balance of 79 million, of which the unassigned portion, the reserve would be about $8 million. Now, do I go through the following slides and then you can ask me the questions later, or do I just stop here for any questions?
What's the preference? Are there any questions by our trustees?
I have a question on this chart.
Okay.
First of all, I want to say that this whole presentation is really well done. I feel like it's the most complete and understandable presentation that we've had, so I appreciate that. I just had a couple little minute questions here. The local revenue achieved is so much less than the, than what had been projected. I'm just curious. Is that because the market crashed or because I would have thought we had the money in bonds, which, which haven't? I'm just curious why that was so much lower.
Definitely. One of them was the interest was lower. And then we also had, the, the state took away about 20 million dollars in the beginning of the year. So your total amount of money that you had itself was lower by that amount, right? This year, they took away some money from Calbright. So, so it affected us in two ways. The the interest revenues that we were projecting did not materialize at the level in which it was projected. So the interests are far lower this year. And I believe that twenty million dollars went out of a budget completely.
Okay. And then the other question, I think I asked something like this last time, but it appears that the the act, the benefits as a percentage of salaries for the academic side is roughly one-third. And the benefits on the non-academic salaries is is much as a higher percentage, like thirty-eight or thirty-nine percent. What accounts for that difference?
At a very simple level, I can say that the benefits are, these are all stat. What you see here as benefits includes statutory benefits, which are like ISRS, Spurs, Social Security, workers' compensation, unemployment insurance. Those things are the same for academic and the non-academic. But what happens under the non-academic is there is a portion for Social Security, which does not come under the benefits for the academic employees. So that that will account for the difference.
Okay, thank you.
So next, I'll go to the next slide.
What, before you do, I, Jolena, you have a question?
Oh, sorry.
I was just wondering how compliant we may be with the fifty percent law.
At this point, I think that we talked about this at the time of the audit report, right? We are not, because we're still in a developmental phase. So it's going to take it, the catch-up period is going to be a little longer before we show more expenses toward the academic arena where we can meet fifty percent law. So we are not meeting it at this time. That was the last year's audit, and I don't believe that we would do it this year also. But we are inching towards it definitely.
How have we progressed in terms of, there was a mention we're in our third year of operation now? How how have we progressed? Have we gone from five percent to seven percent to thirteen percent? Do we have any idea what our our level of increase is over time?
Sorry, I don't have that number offhand, but we can look at it and get back to you unless maybe I can ask. I have my staff, your accounting manager, Jenny, do you have a response for that?
Yeah. Good afternoon, President Haynes and board members. So we've increased each year by approximately two percent. It's it's pretty low, but we are increasing.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That's good. Thank you.
I'm sorry, President Haynes, I have another minor question here, but the operating expense budget was twenty-seven and over twenty-seven million, and we ended up only spending seven million. Just curious about how we explain that.
So I think there are various reasons for, at least very uniquely for Calbright, that we're not spending the amount. One big number would be that a lot of these contracts that we thought that we're going to come in, I'll just give an example, the LBN for one, did not materialize last year, right? That was budgeted at two million, so we did not spend that at all. So that that would be like that we have forecasted, I would say a lot of, what do you call expenditures or proposed contracts that that could come into play, and those things did not happen. And that is why we're left with a lot of money. And the and the other area in which you can see that we did not spend the money is we will not be spending is this capital outlay. We 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 thought we were going to get into an office. We had budgeted funds for that. And we did not spend those dollars and we are carrying them over into the next year.
Vice President Costa.
Yeah, just on that point that Tom just raised, a core, I I want to make sure I understand, though, a lot of the the contracts, it's a slippage issue, meaning that it's going into the next fiscal year, not that it's not going to be implemented. It's just that the process took maybe longer than we had projected when we put together the current year budget.
Yes. That plus, we would also have more newer contracts coming in in the future. And many of them, like the LBN, did not happen. It's going to come into into this fiscal year or the next fiscal year. The answer is yes.
Thank you. Please proceed with your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Next slide. So as so now we are getting into the twenty-two, twenty-three budget approach and the assumptions that we have made as part of this developmental phase of the tentative budget. We held departmental meetings with each of the departmental managers to develop a prudent and stable budget and based on the current needs and future plans or how they envision their departments and how can they gear up their services towards the students. So all the inputs have been taken from the managers before we built the budget. It was a detailed meeting with each one of them, and there'll be more meetings with them before the final budget comes in front of the board. The budget was planned with targeted investment of one-time and ongoing annual resources to support student growth and success. Next slide. So if if you can see in the budget, what we did with each one of the departmental managers is that we broke their budgets by academic FTE and salaries, non-academic FTE and salaries. And like I said before, the statutory benefits for academic and non-academic. And then the health and welfare. You'll see one line item for benefits, but it also includes health and welfare cost for the for Calbright. We've also budgeted a lot of vacant positions, and we'll talk about it in the in the next slides for academic and non-academic positions based on our discussions with our departmental heads, saying that what are their requirements? And we looked at what the board has already approved, so we budgeted for all of them in this budget. Then the supplies and materials, and like we talked about consultants and contracted services is another big piece of expense for us. The capital outlay, which was budgeted in the previous years, is still being budgeted. That's at the same level, depending on what plan we're going to embark on for offices or satellite offices. That has not been determined at this point in time. Next slide. Oh, sorry. Amy, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question, a process question probably for you and Jenny on the departmental submissions. I mean, I'm assuming you're having individual meetings, but you guys are analyzing across the departments on similar expenditures, for example, you know, supplies and materials, like you're analyzing. They seem like they're in the right ballpark amongst the departments, correct?
Yes. And and the other thing was, for example, in the consultants contract, what we would normally do is get to our CEO and discuss and then get input. And if you have to make any changes, this time around, we haven't done that. We have taken the raw data. And we have verified it with the prior year expenditures to see that we are in the ballpark. And then we kind of came up with this tentative budget. There's one more step that is missing is that we definitely have to talk to our CEO before we actually finalize everything and say this is an accurate representation of what the department needs are. Okay.
Please, President, proceed.
Next slide. So now, here you see the your twenty-two, twenty-three budget summary. Again, I'll go through just the bold items, the annual budget. The beginning balance we are estimating is about eight million dollars. The ongoing revenue that we get from the state is fifteen million. And to to Tom's question, we basically lowered the local revenue to twelve thousand dollars at this point in time. It could potentially be a little higher. We don't want to go with a higher number and then lower. This is better for us. Total revenue is about fifteen million dollars for the year with on the annual funding. And if you look at the expenses, again, broken down in detail by academic, non-academic salaries, benefits, supplies and other operating expenses, which will include your consultants and contracted services. So if you look at that, we are estimating annual budget of nineteen million dollars as the expenses and four million dollars as the ending fund balance for twenty-two, twenty-three for the snapshot at this point in time. And I I always like to reiterate the fact that budgets are plans, which are bound to change. By the time we come to you by the final budget, these numbers could be slightly different. If you go during the first quarter or the second quarter, these numbers are are going to be different. But the plan, and the only time that you get the true numbers is when we end the year, what is called when the audit is over and we get you the audited numbers. So anyway. So one-time monies, beginning balance, we are estimating, like I said in the initial slide, seventy-one million dollars. Revenues would be one-twenty for a total expense of twenty-six point six million dollars and ending balance of forty-four. Now, we are estimating for the total between both the funds, beginning balance of seventy-nine point two million dollars. Total revenues to be received in twenty-two, twenty-three of fifteen point one and total expense of forty-five point seven, and we would end the year with about forty-eight point six million dollars. The four million dollars that you see under annual is the amount of reserves, and that represents eight point eight percent for twenty-two, twenty-three. If all things remain the same, if our revenues would be the same, let's say let's say our expenditure doesn't increase, it's the same, we would end up with eight point eight percent in reserve.
Thank you for that. Are there any other comments or questions for a core? I don't see any hands raised. Is is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Thank you. This is a
President Haynes, I'm sorry.
Oh, certainly, Tom, go ahead.
Sorry, I want to ask just one more minor question, which how did the how did we take into account the inflation that we're experiencing now? And and how are we projecting that plays out over the next couple of years?
In terms of the the expenses in.
Yeah, the expense and expenses.
For the for at the salary level, right? We have we have now gotten a little more details because you just approved a salary schedule. So we had the draft in front of us, and so we were able to kind of modify the salaries at a different level, right? We just did not use an inflationary percentage of the salaries. But the benefits were calculated based on state rates, right? The state rate for STIRS, Spurs, workers' compensation changes every year. We were able to get that and we used those rates that are higher than last year. So we accounted for that. In terms of consultants and contracted services, right? We, some of the consultants, we knew what the contracts amounts are going to be for next year. Some of them we don't know, so so we just put placeholders. We did not use, under normal practices would be, let's take our non-salary items and inflate it by about five percent or ten percent. We didn't do it for the current twenty-two, twenty-three year because we are supposed to know the actuals at this point in time. So we took the actuals of consultants that we knew, and then we just put placeholders in each department for potential consultants or contractors that may come in during the course of the year.
So does that mean we don't expect this kind of system-wide inflation to to have a material impact on our operating expenses?
At this point in time, yes, only because that our funds in one-time funds is where most of the expenses go in our operating expenses, and we have enough cushion to absorb any inflation that can take place.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I asked for a public comment, but is there any?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Thank you. Then this is just a discussion and information item. So we're going to move on to five point two, which is that report on contracts and purchases, a core.
Oh, I just wanted to know, there are more slides here. Do we want us to stop?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were, I apologize. Please continue.
So I'm going to continue, but we're going to go pretty fast on those things because they are all pictorial representation of what the table was, right? This is an important shot for the board to see, which is the actual FTEs that we believe that we have at this point in time, including the vacant positions. In one time, we have about twenty-seven non-academic positions and the annual funds, we have twenty-five academic and seventy-one non-academic. Very important to note that this is not the total number of employees that we have in the system today. This includes all the vacancies that we think that we would need to bring in either during next year or within the next few years, right? Because a lot of hiring has not been done. A majority of the vacant positions that you that you have in this listed here in this chart is are those vacancies that have already been approved by the board. And some of them are for planning phase. Some of the managers wanted to input a position, and we retained those things in the in this in the budget itself. So you see about a total of hundred and twenty-two plus positions here. And I would say that at the point in which we were doing this chart, we had only sixty-five actual full-time employees. Nearly fifty of what you have here are actual vacancies in the system, and that's an important point to have. If those vacancies like last year do not materialize, so you will see that towards the end of the year, there'll be more monies left into the in the salary area, right? One of Tom's question was, why are we spending? Why didn't we spend all the monies that we budgeted for? Because we're budgeting for potential vacancies. And due to a lot of hardship in COVID, we were not able to hire a lot of people during the last year. And this year, there's HR has got more aggressive hiring that's taking place. But sometimes we may not be able to bring anybody in, so some of the dollars would be left over as a balance towards the end of the year. Next, next slide. So these are all, I'm just going to go fast, just pictorial representation of pie charts of revenues and expenditures. This is our fifteen million dollars on the annual revenue, which is a small amount of money we are getting in the interest. Next slide. So this is your annual funds broken down by salaries and non-salaries for Fund eleven. You'll see that of the fifteen million dollars that we get, nearly ninety percent of the monies are in salaries and benefits, right? That's where everybody is in Fund eleven. The next slide. So this is Fund twelve, where you see you don't have that amount of salaries here because this is supposed to be for one-time expenditures only, and you don't carry ongoing expenditures here. So that's why you see the salaries and benefits as a very low component. It's not even close to the previous chart. Next slide. So this is a combination of your fund, ongoing and one-time revenues. It shows you how we are spending our dollars or at least how we are estimating the dollars to be spent in terms of both the funds put together in terms of academic, non-academic salaries, benefits and operating expenses. Next slide. So this is important. Again, I'll go pretty fast here. So we also did what is called a multi-year projection, and we wanted to show you how the adopted budget looks from twenty-one, twenty-two. And some of the assumptions we made, going back to Tom questions, are we inflated at the salary level, we inflated at the benefits level for STIRS and PERS, contract amounts were kind of adjusted because we're thinking some of the contracts could be here this year, and they may not be there next year. And we increased the supplies by five percent and other operating expenses by ten percent. For the future, we did definitely a bigger inflation because we don't know what's going to happen. For the current year, we didn't know it because we we are more close to to a real situation than just plugging in some percentage numbers. So for twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five, we've increased our non-salary items by five and ten percent. Next slide. So we just wanted to give you a multi-year budget comparison. This is the twenty-one, twenty-two adopted budget, not what you saw the Q three or what is projected. This is how we had our budget in twenty-one, twenty-two at the beginning of the year with a nine point four one percent reserve. We are saying in twenty-two, twenty-three, based on what we see today, we have about eight point seven eight percent in reserve. That's how we are estimating the year to end. And next slide. So twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five, based on the assumptions I talked about, we believe we will still maintain in twenty-three, twenty-four and eight percent, eight point eight percent reserve. And twenty-four, twenty-five, as we spend down the dollars and as the one-time dollars keep going down, right? Your reserve is going to be slightly altered, and we would still maintain the six point one one percent reserve. And the board policy states that we should keep a five percent reserve. So looking at a budget today and knowing what we know today, and if we forecast out for another three to four years, we will be able to maintain our reserves. Next slide. So staff will be holding additional meetings with the departmental managers to align the budget again. So we'll have to go through this round once again, and then bring the final budget to the board, which where we have a public hearing. And the adoption of the budget will take place on August seventeen. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Board Member Perry, you have your hand raised.
I do. I just want to echo Tom's comments about the cogency of this presentation. It was really comprehensive and comprehensive and comprehensible. And a number of these numbers, a number of the numbers are a moving target, targets sometimes being a little word in this instance. And I I really commend you for the the clarity of the of the job you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a, and I'll ask for public comment again, just in case, but I have a bit of a concern. I recognize that we're only legally required and statute required to hold a a five percent reserve. My experience is that a deep recession, we will, we will, we will lose faculty with just a five percent reserve. So and I'll tell you, a significant number of community colleges are moving into an eight to a ten percent reserve, given the experience it had with the big recession. And unless there unless there are dollars that are discretionary dollars that can be moved. And so I guess that's the question I have relative to this particular budget. Will the, when when you look down in terms of forecast, Will the, when you look down in terms of forecast, are there, besides the 6% in 2425, are there discretionary dollars that can be moved in in the direction that are not locked in and required in certain categories? Or and what and what would that percentage be?
Based on looking at your recent history for reserves, right? And how we spend the dollars, I don't think we have a worry at least for 2223. 2122, you're definitely going to be far about your 10, far above your 10% reserve. 2223, we are estimating 8.8, right? And we do know a big portion of our expenditures is budgeted in salaries. And like I said at the beginning, it depends on how we hire and how many people we bring in. If we don't, we will not be spending those dollars. So if you were to ask me, based on my knowledge of how I'm reviewing the budget, even in 2223, you will, by the time you close the year, it's a year away. But I can tell you from what I've been looking at in terms of expenditure and the trajectory of what we'll be doing, I don't think that's a problem even for 2223 to retain your 10%. Now, the future is something that we don't know about. We don't know how much of a push we are going to have in capital outlay, how much of a push in contracted services. One, one thing that I know for the future at this point is we will definitely meet the board required minimum. Anything other than that would be a guess because I don't know what the future holds or what the plans for Calbright would be in terms of expenditures. Till 2223, we are in a pretty strong situation to retain the 10%. We are showing only 8.8 at this point in time, but I know by the time we even bring you a final budget, it could change, right? But for 2324 and 2425, maybe we may have to make some programmatic changes if the board's directive is to retain a 10% at the time. And then in discussion with our CEO, we'll be able to do that.
Okay, so I'm, I am not, I'm not concerned about 2223. I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking downstream, I guess is what I would say. And and I guess I have, I have seen in relative to the loss of faculty, what that happens in the recession. And for many, for many colleges, they were, they were not prepared. That 5% went by really went. And and as a result of that, not only did they have to lay off their part-time, they had to lay off tenured faculty. Now, I realize we don't hit tenure, and we may not hit tenure relative to 2425, and that may be a consideration. But it having, having a reserve that you can count on in those out years, we would have, in in the fourth year, at the end of the fourth year, we would have had, and we were one of the few, we, I'm sorry, Los Rios, was one of the few districts that did not have to lay off one tenured faculty. But we would have, had we not had the the state not, or the the state having a proposition in order to increase the gas tax. We may not be that lucky, given how much our gas costs right now. And that money would have gone to educational systems. So I guess I'm a little, I'm a little skittish as I look at what's happening nationally, what's happening to gas, what's happening to the economy. I don't want to wait too late to be looking at what that reserve looks like. I guess I am sort of a planner, and I would I would want to know that there are, there are reserves and that we're planning for reserves in a way that we can anticipate. And so less about this coming year, more about a couple of the future years. And if that's dwindling down to about 6% and then that can then go down to 5%, I'm not, I'm not certain about that. So I, I'm willing, I mean, we can have a conversation. I just want us to be planning for the worst, hoping for the best and not hoping for the and and not hoping for the best in relative to not planning for it. So I'll just leave it there. It doesn't require a question. I just wanted to put that out relative to our discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I too, I thought it was a great presentation. So I don't, don't know if there's any further public comments?
There are no public comments, President Haynes.
Okay, so then we're going to, thank you. We're going to move to 5.2, which is a report on contracts and purchases. And of course, you provide that every month. Are there any highlights that we need to be aware of relative to those contracts?
No, thank you. This is our standard item based on board policy 6100 that we are required to bring all contracts and purchases for as an information item. So what you have is just a listing of the contracts and summary of purchases.
Any questions from our our board? Don't see any questions. Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
All right, so we're down to reports from our Calbright Senate. There is no report for this month, Calbright Faculty Association. Again, not, there's no report. And then 6.3, which is the California school employees. And there is no report for 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 that, for that group as well. So we're now moving to 7.1, which is public comment. Do we have any?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Well, we've come to the bewitching hour where I can say the business of the Board of Trustees is now complete, and we can adjourn. So I thank you. Thanks for hanging in with me.
Thank you.
Thank you.